The Monday, October 3rd, 2022 regular meeting of the Gardner City Council will come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Present.
Counsel Bujer?
Present.
Counsel Craig Cormier? Counsel Anna Cormier?
Present.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Present.
Counsel Harder?
Present.
Counsel He?
Present.
Counsel Matt?
Present.
Counsel Tyros?
Present.
Counsel Walsh?
Present.
And President in this space?
Present. Please rise to recite the opening prayer and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Almighty God, we thank you for bringing us together this evening, inspire us to work with deep and sound decisions, and direct us toward the attainment of good city government. We pray thee to bless and protect all the people of our city, and to so guide and inspire us that we may liberate and unity in harmony, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Open meeting recording notice. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? Reading of the minutes of prior meetings. We'll begin with the reading and approval of the June 21st, 2022 informal meeting and June 21st, 2022 regular meeting. Is there a motion?
Madam President?
Counsel Ron Cormier?
I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of those meetings and accept them as presented.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Walsh to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented. Is there discussion on the motion?
Madam President?
Counsel Boone?
I'm going to be abstaining because I was not here.
Thank you, Counselor. One extension. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes. There are no public hearings. Communications from the mayor orders item 10799 and order transferring $3,000 from Law Department assistant salaries to outside council expenditures. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel General Lawitz.
Thank you, Madam President. This expenditure from the Law Department is for outside council, as stated. Attorney Flick has a conflict of interest as outlined in our packet here. He has spoken with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Ethics Commission, and they have recommended he recuse himself from representing the city. The money order here is a transfer from the line item that was for the Assistant City Solicitor, which the line item itself had, I believe, $60,000 in it. And the actual pay for the Assistant City Solicitor was lower than that. So there's money there to be expended. This had been formed. It is just, for lack of a better term, seed money to start the payments for representation. That being said, I move the order transferring 3,000 from the Law Department assistant salaries to outside council.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to authorize the transfer. Is there discussion on the motion? This will be a roll call vote. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
No.
Counsel Bujer?
Yes.
Counsel Anna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel He?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President in this space?
Yes. Nine yeas, one nay, motion passes. Item 10804, in order to raise and appropriate $46,143.61 for the mayor's unclassified department for operating expenses budget for fiscal year 2023, report from the Finance Committee, Counsel General Lawitz.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee was unanimous in favor of this. This transfer is from, as provided in our packet, the opioid settlement. The, long story, I guess, long story short, the City Garden Slaves received five, almost half a million dollars. However, that's over 18 years, so it'll be 18 payments up until 2038. To date, the city has received the $46,143.61. At this time, it's being deposited into our general fund. It does have the restrictions on it that it has to be used for opioid and substance abuse type treatments. So we need to appropriate back out. The plan here, as outlined, is to work with some of our neighboring communities. It's Winston, hopefully Winston Westminster, Ashmanham and Westminster, what former collaborative through Gamma, where we hire a person who's a clinician, is able to help individuals with opioid type and substance abuse problems. I know there's representatives here that can speak a lot more intelligently to it than I can as they work in the field, but I do move the order to appropriate the funds.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to authorize the order to raise and appropriate $46,143.61 for the mayor's unclassified department for operating expenses budget for fiscal year 2023. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Walsh?
Yes, I wonder whether there'll be, I see this is going into the mayor's unclassified account for the current year. I wonder if this will be a regular budget item as we go into, in future years, and whether the cost for the program or the city's contribution to the program will be restricted to the money we get from the opioid settlement.
Mayor Nicholson?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Per current Department of Revenue regulations, the funding that comes in is restricted for uses for addiction prevention or opioid treatment. This is a restriction that comes from the lawsuit itself that was settled. In terms of going into the mayor's unclassified budget, this is something that, under the current DOR regulations, as the money is not listed as a special revenue account fund, has to be appropriated as a supplemental budget. So we just made the new line item in the mayor's unclassified account. Again, that's something that, would we be restricted to only money from the settlement? Not at this time, under the current regulations, though there is an amendment in current state legislation that, if passed, would create a special revenue account, which then would restrict money that would be used to that amount. But either way, it's whatever's appropriated by the council in that line item is what gets approved. And that's why I've included the full funding schedule between now and 2038 in the packet for the council during this evening, so that you can see what exactly would be included in that budgetary line item as we move forward. But under the current regulations, it has to be appropriated for a specific amount based on the funds received by the opioid settlement, by the city council. So that, does that answer your question, Counselor? I'm sorry.
Counsel Walsh?
My only question is that, in future years, will there be additional funding from the city for this, to fund this program beyond what we receive from the opioid settlement?
Oh, that is not planned at this time, no.
At the, most famous words, "at this time."
At this time. I can't predict what's going to happen in 2038, but I have no intention of doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mayor. Counsel Walsh, all set? Further discussion? This will also be a roll call vote. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Bujer?
Yes.
Counsel Anna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel He?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President in this space?
Yes. Ten yeas, the motion passes. Communications, item 10800, a measure authorizing acceptance of donations and gifts for use by Parks Department. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Ron Cormier.
Yes, this is a tree that's been placed in Volney Hall Park. I guess there's going to be a plaque also dedicating this tree to those that have been lost through substance abuse. It'd be nice if this was the last tree we'd ever have to plant, but Gardner, like so many communities, has benefited. These people have been kind enough to donate a tree to keep it in our minds. And I make a motion that we accept the donation as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz to authorize acceptance of the donation. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Item 10801, a measure authorizing acceptance of donations and gifts for use by Mayor's Department. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Ron Cormier.
Finance Committee is favorable. You've all, I'm sure, seen the 100 pots in the downtown area and another additional 25 in the South Gardner area. The pots were covered by a grant from the Commonwealth. I think it's a Smart Streets program. The flowers that are going into those are being sponsored by different individuals and businesses throughout the community, list of which you've received also. Beautifying our community, there's been a lot of great positive comments. And thanks to the cooperation of many, it's working. So I make a motion that we accept the gifts as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz to authorize acceptance of the gifts. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Walsh?
This issue was raised by Counsel Matt on a prior, in a private conversation that we had, just the two of us, about maintenance of the flower containers and how they'll be stored. And I'm wondering if that issue has been addressed, whether it could be the sponsors to each of them that will be responsible for maintenance of the flower pots and removal of the pots so they don't break over the winter, and whether or not they're going to be in the way of plowing and those kinds of things.
Thank you, Counselor. Mayor Nicholson?
Thank you, Madam President. The maintenance of the pots will be mainly done, or what we've seen be done right now is we've actually had a lot of businesses reach out saying that they'd like to maintain some of the pots. So, for instance, John's Sport Shop is actually watering and maintaining a lot of the pots on Main Street. The flowers themselves were planted by Valley Florist. They do drive around once a week just to check in on them. For instance, there was, in one instance, a mumm plant that was actually pulled out of the pot. Valley can pick that up and replant that in the pot that was there. The DPW will put them out in the spring and take them back the week after Thanksgiving so that they don't interfere with plowing. We'll watch the weather because we have had those rogue November snowstorms before. But the plan is there's enough space in the cold storage building at the DPW to empty the pots, store them, and then put them back out in the springtime. But for the wintertime, they'll be removed from the sidewalks. There are some places in the downtown I just want to throw out, particularly from Gardner Thrift Shop down to Wichita Wardrobe, where there are no flower pots. And the reason being for that is, per ADA with compliance, you need 36 inches in the sidewalk. And the sidewalks themselves just barely need their 36 inches in those locations. So that's why there are some locations that don't have flower pots there. But to answer the Counselor's question, in terms of winter storage, those are going to be taken in in the winter so that they aren't correct. They are actually all plastic, even though they look like cement, so they are a little more durable. But we just want to be safe with that. And in terms of the maintenance there, we'll see what's needed as it goes around. But it's really something that we're doing, collaborating with Valley. Or some, like I said, some of the businesses, like John's Sport Shop, have said that they would like to take them on themselves. Or Wichita Wardrobe and Turpin Traders are also taking care of several of them as well, just because that's their way that they would like to give back to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Matt?
In my conversation with Counsel Walsh, it was basically through the public service for the DPW, because if you go downtown Lemonster, they have absolutely beautiful flowers. But they also have a water tank truck and a person that goes around and takes care of them and weeds them and waters them. And my concern is, and it always has been, is in Gardner, we build things, we invest in things, but we don't maintain them well. And that is my concern, because when you have 125 pots throughout the city, there's, you know, some businesses will take care of them, but most of them will not be taken care of. And that is my concern. It's, I mean, they look beautiful now, but I just want, I want to know what, specifically what the plan is moving for, because there needs to be more, I believe, a concrete plan if you're going to invest that much money in the plants and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item 10802, a notification on the status of funding from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Ron Cormier.
Members of the council had asked in the past for a expenditure list, if you will. And the mayor has provided us with this. Just a couple of notes. One was on the COVID test kits. He did mention it's $432,000 expended. Apparently, we purchased them, because you had to buy them such huge quantities. We, as a city, purchased them in advance and provided them for other smaller communities who are in the process of reimbursing us. Now, and that number will come down by some $300,000, which will be put back into, added to that $1,900,000 that's left. The other one, the facade improvement grant, there are eight at least applicants in process now. So that's started, I believe, in June. So that's the only questions that we had on that. So at this point, I'll make a motion that we place this on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz to place the notification on file. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item 10803, a notification of independent auditor's report FY 2022, single audit, no findings. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Ron Cormier.
This is a federal grant funding audit. That's why it's a single-purpose grant. But this is the second one that we've had with no findings at all, which is exactly what you want. It rarely happens. They usually manage to find something. And our finance department must be commended, again, as they were with the city audit, for the fine work that they've done. So I make a motion that we place this on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz to place the notification on file. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel General Lawitz?
Just want to note that the mayor made it clear, two years in a row, if they get a third year in a row, the times the audit has to happen stretches out to every three years instead of every year. So the hard work of the team has potential payoff and savings of not having to do an audit going forward. Thank you.
And as Counsel General Lawitz said during the Finance Committee meeting, no pressure for next year on that. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera, there are none. Reports to standing committees, appointments, item 10770, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Frances Lemieux to the position of cultural council member for term expiring August 30th, 2022. Report from the Appointments Committee, Counsel Tyros.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met with the mayor and cultural council director to discuss this appointment. The Gardner Cultural Council supports public programs that promote access to education, diversity, and excellence in arts, humanities, and interpretive sciences in Gardner and the immediate surrounding community. Ms. Lemieux has been an art teacher in Gardner Public Schools for over a decade and is involved in the fine arts herself. The mayor asked her to join the council to help increase outreach to the local younger artists in the community. The committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore I move the appointment be certified.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel Matt to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Bujer?
I'd say we're closer to three decades. We're getting older. But despite her trying, she never really passed on her artistic abilities to me. But I am happy to see such a nice person get involved in something like this and stay involved in something like this. The arts are important, and this is awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item 10771, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Paulette Burns to the position of cultural council member for term expiring August 30th, 2025. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Burns actually reached out to cultural council director, or chair, rather, DeRoy, and inquired on how to become a member. So I'm very pleased to hear that. It's a testament to Ms. Burns and the community we live in that she reached out to be on this council. And the committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore I move the appointment be certified.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel Matt to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. Paulette Burns was a good friend of my mother's for many, many years. And her and her husband Duncan have been dedicated to the city for a very long time. So I'm pleased to recommend this appointment as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counsel Matt?
I just want to point out that, for the public, that a couple of these appointments do not necessarily live in Gardner, but the cultural council serves the greater Gardner community. So I think it's important for people to realize that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item 10772, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Christina Singer to the position of cultural council member for term expiring August 30th, 2025. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met with the mayor and the cultural council director, discussed the appointment. This is a reappointment. Ms. Singer has served on the committee quite well in her role and is willing to stay for a second and last of her consecutive service or term, per Mass General Law. The committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore I move the appointment be certified.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel Matt to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Item 10773, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Kathleen Deal to the position of cultural council member for term expiring August 30th, 2025. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Deal is a resident who has knowledge of the local community and the local programming organizations beneficial to the council from employment in the North Central Massachusetts Chamber of Commerce and North Central Massachusetts Development Corporation. Committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore I move the appointment be certified.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel Matt to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Bujer?
No, Kat Deal for some time now, and she is the real deal. And she, having that connection with the North Central Chamber of Commerce and the communities of Pittsburgh and the communities that they do represent will be a large benefit to the cultural council. Because sometimes you can't get people to apply for these grants, and sometimes you need a larger reach or a regional collaboration to do some of the larger things that you want to do. She also hosts a radio show, and I think that's pretty cool. So I'm happy to see Kat's name here today, and thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item 10788, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Chuck LaHayes to the position of historical commission member for term expiring September 13th, 2025. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. And this will be the same report for this item and the next three items. All of these individuals listed are, were members of the Historical Commission when their term expired approximately eight years ago in 2014. The mayor identified the need to fill this commission, and these are the members willing to serve their city again. The Appointments Committee thanked those who did serve in 2014 and could not continue for their service. And with the centennial celebration next year, I think this is a fitting time to recommend these appointments. The committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore I move the appointment be certified.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel Matt to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item 10789, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Scott Huntune to the position of historical commission member for term expiring September 13th, 2025. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. Same report. The committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore I move the appointment be certified.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel Matt to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item 10790, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Alana Tumi to the position of historical commission member for term expiring September 13th, 2025. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. Same report. The committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore I move the appointments be certified.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel Matt to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item 10791, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Chris Para to the position of historical commission member for term expiring September 13th, 2025. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. Same report. The committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore I move the appointment be certified.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel Matt to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Public Safety Committee. At this time, I would like to ask Counsel Ron Cormier to take the chair for item number 10784. I will be stepping down from the chair for this item and recusing myself from the vote as I have a potential conflict.
And a report from the Public Safety Committee. Counsel Boone? Thank you, Madam President. The Public Safety Committee met, and we formally approved of the application. I'm recommending approval, but Gardner Tembin's, of course, has always been a member in good standing. So I fully support it, and the Safety Committee supports it. So I move the motion to approve the application.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded by Counsel Hardin to accept, approve the application of Gardner Tembin's located at 560 West Broadway for a bowling alley license. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And Counsel?
Thank you, Counsel Ron Cormier. Item number 10785, an application by Gardner Thrift Store for a license to deal in secondhand articles at 280 Central Street. Report from Public Safety Committee, Counsel Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, the Gardner Thrift Store has everything in place that needs to be done. So they're a member in good standing for a business, and the Public Safety Committee voted unanimously to approve the application.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Boone, seconded by Counsel Hardin to approve the application. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Unfinished Business and Matters for reconsideration, item 10781, an act relative to establish a special act charter drafting committee. Is there a motion? Counsel Walsh?
Yes, leading up to a motion. Yes, leading up to a motion, we had lively discussion, and I think a valuable one during our informal meeting earlier this evening on this item. I think the consensus was that there was a desire to have a little more time, some more time, to consider the significance and possible amendments to the draft that's before us. So I move that the, that the item be tabled and be, and scheduled for a further informal meeting prior to the second city, regular city council meeting in November.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier, to table the item and schedule an informal meeting, as the committee whole, for the second meeting in November, for the, for the city council. Is there discussion on the motion? We're gonna do a roll call vote on this item. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counsel Ron Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel John Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Hardin?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item 10798, a petition submitted by Private Oversight LLC for an ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 675, entitled Zoning for Zoning Act, Mass General Law, uh, Mass General Law 40A. We will have more time on this item and will remain on the calendar, as we have previously referred it to the planning board. They still need to meet. We've been notified by Director Beauregard that they will be meeting in October, but until they meet, we will keep this item on the calendar. Okay? We'll begin to do business. Counselor Heath?
No new business. Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Tyros?
No new council business this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel John Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. In the name of, I guess, shameless promotion of another family member, my father's having his annual veterans roundtable at the museum at 7:00 PM this Thursday. This year, it's the North Quab and Trail Association who work to make trails in the area more accessible to vets, especially those with mobility issues. So if you're able to attend, 7:00 PM at the Gardner Museum this Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Mack?
No new business this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm wondering if there's a camera on our Dropbox in front of City Hall, and, and if not, if it's possible that we get a camera on there. As we know, we've heard things of, some funny things going on with Dropbox over the years, so I personally feel it would be a great thing if we get a camera on that Dropbox just in case. The second thing I wanted to mention in our public safety meeting, the Board of Health Director, Lauren Saunders, mentioned she's gonna need about $200,000 to fix the pumps at the landfill. And she was hoping to get money from our free cash, but last I heard, we spent almost all of our free cash. So I'm hoping that the Finance Committee can, can deliberate on this, and the mayor, and, and figure out what needs to be done for the landfill. And that's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Mayor Nicholson, can you speak to that?
Sure thing, Madam President. I first want to clarify that this is the former trash dump landfill that these pumps are having issues with. In terms of free cash, per, again, DOR regulations, as has been explained, the city, no municipality in Massachusetts, quote unquote, has free cash between July 1st and mid, mid-October, early November, when DOR allows us to use free cash. And our free cash number would renew every year, as in whatever gets renewed in the next couple of weeks is based off of the, any excess funding or surpluses or budgetary items that we, that want to expand to limits, based off of last fiscal year. So the money that was voted on before that was quote unquote, used up, was from the previous fiscal year, so we wouldn't even be considering that at all at this point, anyway. So that is something, however, that's also a different account, because that's out of the enterprise account, so that would come out of the retained earnings in the landfill enterprise account. We're reviewing those funding sources moving forward there, and also working to see if we can go out to bid to find a cheaper price on them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Boone?
Follow up. Mr. Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, Lemmonster used to keep tons of free cash available, and they had all this excess funds, and we're down, I think last I saw, $60,000.
So we had $75,000 left at the previous fiscal year's close. However, we had $25,000 left over at the end of the fiscal year before that, and then had $3.6 million when November came around. We covered normally around $3.1 to $3.4 million every November when our free cash is certified. And then again, it's how you budget, and that free cash number differs from year to year, based off of that, and that's for every municipality across the 351 communities in Massachusetts.
Last follow up, if I may, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, so there'll be money in case it's needed to spend at the landfill?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Counsel Boudreaux?
Thank you. Saturday, September 24th was a glorious day in Gardner. The, after three years, the Cherlouge and, I forget what Patty calls it, with the fabulous Fall Festival, and it was a great day. A friend of our city, Andrew Boucher, was clearly watching over all of us that day, so we all had fun. It was a beautiful day. I unfortunately did not win the Cherlouge, but I came closer than I have in the past. I would like to thank the Square Two, the Gardner, was it the Festival Committee? The Gardner Festival Committee, the Gardner Railhouse, the Acadian Club, and everyone that was involved in that. It was a beautiful day, and a fun time was had by all. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Hardin?
No new business, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Walsh?
As I understand it, just to follow up on what the discussion was around the landfill expense and the use of free cash, last year's free cash cannot be used once July 1st comes around and we go into a new fiscal year, and anything that's left over will pass through to the certification of the most recent year's free cash, none of which can be spent or be available, whether it be free cash or return, or retained earnings, until after it's certified by the Department of Revenue, which, as the mayor indicates, usually occurs depending upon how quickly they act on it, sometime between the, toward the end of October and into November. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Ron Cormier?
I'll have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I have nothing this evening. I'll adjourn the motion on the floor to adjourn after the closing part.
I move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Boudreaux, seconded by Counsel Mack. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes.
Almighty Father, who sees us overall, I ask to adjourn. We thank thee for the opportunity of your deliberation and action witnessed during the course of this meeting. Blessed be thy name, all those gathered here, and the people whose representatives we are, and who will attend to our common welfare, until our next meeting. Amen.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, everyone.